The July 19, 2012 meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm not sure if we have someone, a pledge from one of our students, so instead I will turn to our superintendent. His first meeting as superintendent, Mr. Pfeifer, would you lead us on?
I would be honored. Just for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary of Commerce?
Director Schreiber?
Here.
Director Schreiber?
Here.
Director Chisaro?
Here.
Director Wilson?
Here.
Director Schreiber, present.
Director Apple?
Here.
Director Shell, present.
Director Wapuian?
Here.
Director Russo?
Here.
At this point, we will invite anybody from the audience to come forward and present to the board or speak to the board on any item on our agenda. Saying no one approach the board or make note that there will be a session, a portion of the meeting at the end in which you can bring up any item. It doesn't have to be something that's been existed. With that, we will move on to a presentation. Maggie Michigan, Best Buddies Program.
I don't really have a-
Maggie, would you go up just for everybody watching at home and introduce yourself? Before you up?
There.
The microphone, right? I'm sorry, to the microphone right there and just, you are-
Hi, I'm Maggie Michigan. I'm the transition coordinator here. I don't really have a major presentation. In your packets, you guys got the information that we were accepted as Best Buddy chapter. I just really wanted to come and let you know how exciting it is because at this point there are 15 chapters sitting on the waiting list that have been on for like over two years. They've only taken one chapter in the last three years and they're taking us. We're in with only five chapters in Pittsburgh. There's Mount Lebanon, Heinrichland, Rosshire, Gloucester Chapel, and Penn Hills, all of which are huge schools.
Yeah.
And I'm just like really excited that we got it because it's a great opportunity for the students. I found out before coming in here that Carla was actually the person that started the Duquesne chapter. And I just, if you guys have any questions or anything about it, you want to know what it is, we can talk about it a little. I'm sure she has a lot more information than I do because I'm really new at this, but it's one really exciting-
Could you maybe just, in two minutes, just-
I can say a lot in two minutes.
Okay. So that, we are all, all of us, the board and everyone here, so we just understand. Secretary, what is the Best Buddies Program?
Best Buddies is a nonprofit organization and it was started by Anthony Henry Schreiber. And it's like the sister program to Special Olympics when it started. It started in early 90s and when it-
I think the 80s, 90s when it actually started. It started when ID's, when IDA came in because it's like Special Olympics is special needs kids doing athletics. This is an inclusion model. This is trying to get peer relationships established with the special needs students. If you've ever been around special needs kids, you kind of realize they don't often have a lot of friends. This creates a friendship bonding experience for them and it's just an amazing opportunity for them.
Within them as a group?
Within our school, we'll have typical students-
They become buddies.
-that will become a buddy to a specific individual and they will make that relationship during the whole year.
So at the collegiate level, and I know it's very similar at the high school level, secondary level, as a buddy, you were required to call or email your buddy one time a week and then we would have monthly events. My, our group, they played at Duquesne, we played basketball game, we watched the movies, did things like that, just what natural friendships would be about and do, which is a lack of that social part, especially as kids with disabilities get a little bit older. That social awareness and social acceptance kind of tends to squander off. So this is a, this program is, I love Best Buddies and what it stands for, but it really brings a lot of awareness and acceptance and really that sense of equality. So it's a wonderful honor to be recognized.
So to become a best buddy, are you, are these typically other students within the school?
Yes.
Okay.
We actually, two years ago, we had, we weren't allowed to operate, this is the Best Buddy logo in case you happen to see it running around anywhere, it'll be on TV and stuff, but we weren't allowed to use that because we weren't accept, we weren't a real Best Buddies chapter at that point. We were, we called ourselves Best Buddy wannabes and we had about 25 students that met on club day, which was once, sorry, once a month. And the kids got to work with the kids that were in the Life Skills Program as well as some of the kids in the Learning Support Program. So they were all excited about it. It didn't go anywhere because we weren't accepted and we didn't have clubs last year. So now this year, I actually have the names of all those kids. I will contact them and see if I can get them back into it again.
What the goal is, so that they would go to a basketball game with them or see even develop the relationships to go outside of structured activity and to show that sense of equality.
It kind of sounds similar to Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Very similar.
Any questions for either of our-
Just want to thank you for your efforts to bring that to our district.
Sure, no problem.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Moving on, I will entertain a, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 28th, 2012 regular voting meeting. Is there such a motion?
So who's?
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Provin' second, is there any discussion? There being known, we will vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Mentioned, motion passes. Under reports, I will report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting in which we discussed litigation, contract, and personnel issues. It was also decided in the executive session that the board is directing the superintendent to post the athletic director position. Is there anything else that we discussed that should be mentioned?
Yeah, okay.
With that, I'll turn to Mr. Pfeifer for the administrative report. Again, I just want to welcome you, Gary, to the district. Your first meeting as superintendent.
Yes.
Very exciting. It's been a great 19 days so far.
Yes.
Maybe 18 because Monday the second was actually the first day after. But with that, I'll turn you over and if you could just then go through the administrative report.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russos, and the first thing I want to say is how excited I am to be here, coming to your community and work with you. It's been a really warm welcome. It's been afforded to me by the school board, the administrative team. I especially appreciate the time I've been able to meet with Kerry Badger and Mike Cosy from the Federation as we work together to try to develop goals and plans for the district as we move ahead. One of the things that I want to have a special thank you to the board for is allowing me the opportunity to work with Dr. Joe Imperial. That's really been helpful to me personally and professionally as I make the transition to the district and we look at some things that have taken place in the past and try to plot a course. It's just such a means of support and really collaboration to be able to do that. And again, I have to thank the board for providing that opportunity. As we're moving ahead and looking to the 2012, 2013 school year, we're looking not only at data from state assessments as we're getting that in and reviewing it, we're also looking at different programs we can provide to the students and the families here in the district. One of the things that we're doing in preparing for opening day is setting up the Ovea's Fully Program. And the faculty has done a tremendous job with the administrative team forming committees to get that together and make it a truly district-wide, community-wide event in early September. The other program that we have and that I'm very proud for our district is we want a few districts to get this program. And it's only through the hard work of faculty and administrative team members, Lisa Rowley, Lee Myford, Carla Hudson, J.C. Maslick, and Laura Burns, is setting up the 21st Century Community Learning Grant. And what that grant is going to do is allow us to set up programs after school for students and provide some outreach programs for parents. And again, I'm very proud of the team. They worked on it all last year, but it's quite accomplishment for our district to be able to get that. And we're in a good company. And at this point, to segue, I'm going to skip ahead a little bit and ask Mrs. Myford to talk more about the 21st Century Grant. Mrs. Myford.
Okay. Well, this is a process that has taken a while. We started back in November and I would say we owe gratitude to Mrs. Shell and Mary Kavistic, who I see is here, who helped with the first application of the grant. So we applied once in November and we did not get the grant at that time, but we got a lot of good feedback at the time about how to improve the application. So what happened was when we started again, we took the feedback and we had a lot of leadership really from the teachers. And I really believe that's why we got it the second time that we applied because we put a lot more information in about curriculum and what would be going on during the grant period of time. So the teachers who really helped with that were Mrs. Rowley and Mrs. Jones and Ms. Sani helped us add all the curriculum pieces that I know I had missed the first time and they pointed out to us were missed. So the grant is really about creating a community learning center. Now, there might be questions about why that's in Carnegie. It's based in Carnegie Elementary School. The reason for that is because this funding, to even ask for the funding, you have to be a school that would be approved for school-wide title services, which means you have to be a school that has at least 40% free reduced lunch, which brought us to Carnegie. The grant is written for after-school programming for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Three hours a night. There's an hour of reading for everyone. There's an hour of intermural club programming for everyone. And then two nights a week there's science and two nights a week there's math. So it's really about creating a community program that also offers academic enrichment and some extracurricular enrichment as well to make it interesting. So those are the basics of the program. It's a three-year commitment and if we accept the money, there is a lot of reporting to be done. There's a lot of data to be collected. I'm sure there are a lot of meetings for us to go to. We're also committed to go to at least three different presentations, workshops a year. The people who are involved in leading the grant have to go to a national workshop and local workshop. We just got back online today and finished a few of the requirements that we still needed to do before they'd give us the final approval. We're a little unclear about the period of time when the money has to be spent. We were just talking about that. I'm sure the state will tell us soon now that we resubmitted the final paperwork again. But it's our understanding that 15 districts were awarded this grant in the state in this round. So it is pretty exciting. And again, it would be $108,000 a year for three years for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. It is at Carnegie. It does include the Carnegie Library. There was a line item for people from Carnegie Library to come to Carnegie Elementary School and do presentations for our students. And that's another way to involve the community. And it was really, really the help of the mayor, getting the library involved, working out some of the coordination of how that would happen and who I needed to talk to in the library and a lot of meetings about that. And so we're trying to do this in a way that involves everyone in the community. The idea is when the grant period ends, then the students have those relationships in the town. So I think that's most of the specifics that I have at this time. I know Mrs. Burns was also very involved in this cycle of submitting the grant. In fact, when we submitted it, it was midnight after a board meeting one night. So we're intensively writing this the second time around and we're very excited.
Thank you, Ms. Myford. Why do you have the mic? Do you have anything else to add as part of your regular report?
Well, we actually, could you share with everyone the amount? I don't recall hearing the amount of the grant.
It's $108,000 a year for three years.
So a total of $324,000 paid over three years.
Can I ask a question? Although it's at Carnegie, would a craft, someone that tends craft in in fifth or sixth grade be able to-
Other students and particularly, that is particularly important for seventh and eighth graders because any student who is in seventh and eighth grade could tend. We don't have a bus at the end of the day, so someone would have to pick them up. But the grant was written based on academic need. It has to be focused based on financial concerns, but it's written based on academic need. So yes, it would be open to all students.
And so, did you say it was two hours after school?
It's really three hours. It's, everyone has an hour of reading. And Ms. Sani helped us tremendously with deciding what material could be used and what would be taught and that was very specific in the grant. And then they have extracurricular, part of it is parent outreach and part of it is adult mentoring. So I'm hoping the mayor helps us as well with the adult mentoring because we'll need volunteers from the community to pull them in for social skills, for having local community members come in and work with the students at that time. And there's a newspaper club during that period. So we'll be producing things to meet the parents about what's going on in our schools.
And do the students self-refer or do they have to be recommended by a teacher?
They, they could self, we wrote it for 90 students, so I'm sure we'll have enough spaces that students could self-refer. But it was originally written based on academic need because of, you know, the reading and math.
So the teacher would identify that they might benefit and refer them. And will the, do the referrals occur throughout the year or is it the beginning of the year for them?
Well, the biggest enrollment time I would say would be the beginning of the year because we do have to maintain a certain level of attendance for the grant. So that's why you see things on the agenda tonight because the earlier we can do things and the sooner we can start the program, the better it's going to be for us. But we put things on for tonight hoping to get things started and then found out on the website today, we're not exactly sure of the time period it starts, but I'm certain the PDE will contact us soon and say, come to a meeting, we're going to roll out everything you have to do.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any additional questions regarding the grant? Ms. Myford, would you continue with your regular director of people personnel report?
I think that was the most exciting news that I had.
It's hard to top that.
Yeah.
Then I'd like to move to the principals' reports and start with the Doctor Cecini.
Well, primarily, one thing I wanted to bring before the board to see if it would be okay to proceed. Mr. Jim Glosser, who's our varsity boys' angles tennis coach, contacted me some months ago about a program through the USTA, United States Tennis Association, they have a facility assistance program. As I think everyone knows, we've not been able to utilize our tennis courts on grounds for a number of years. And I was contacted, we made application to see if we were eligible for the grant money. And I was contacted by a USTA representative about two weeks ago who sent me some information and said we would be eligible. It does not cover the entire project, but we would provide a budget and they would be able to match up to 20% of that, of that funding. At this point, we don't have a budget in place. I want to talk to Mr. Riccio about what he can see and get Coach Glosser to put as well as anybody else who's a taser player out there as well. And if the board would agree or would like me to proceed with that, Coach Glosser.
Well, I, it's great to hear that someone would be willing to cover 20% cost putting in a tennis court. What we have right now is clearly is not usable, has not been usable. I know there are many of us who have felt that we either need to A, put in a new tennis court, or B, just get rid of it and use the area in some other more effective and productive way. I wonder if this isn't better, well, if this isn't better as part of the overall discussion that we're going to have in terms of investment in facilities in this district, clearly 20% is a lot. This leaves 80% to us. If we decide to be putting it into a tennis court, it may mean having to sacrifice but not doing something else. How long is this available to us? What's the urgency for us to?
I don't think there's great urgency. I told him, the gentleman I spoke with, we would not be able to do anything probably until next summer at the very earliest.
And his response was?
Not a problem.
Is it certain?
What, do we have any idea? Have we had any estimates over the last recent period of time to know what it would cost to resurface those tennis courts?
I think it depends on the number of courts you want to put in.
Well, how many do we have out there, two?
No, I think it's three or four. I don't think there's a number. But that'll play into it. I want to say you're talking probably a third, 50,000 dollars or something more to leave that. Because I don't know if the fencing around it would need to be redone as well. I haven't truly commissioned that.
And when you talk to Johnny, you can talk about that.
Yes. We'll get a budget together before we do anything so that we can-
You know, I bet that John already has something on that because that's been a point of discussion, but it would be worth at least having the discussion with John so that you can see what you order a magazine, you know, the other 80% is. And, you know, I agree with David how that fits into the overall scheme, but I think that when you have an opportunity to acquire some funding, I think it would be foolish not to at least take a good glance at it to see what it could bring us.
Never want to say no to money. I would also ask Doctor Cecini, Mr. Pfeifer, you know, how about our track? Is there a US track? Is there, and perhaps there might be some other opportunities along those lines. I'll remind everyone here, it's under you, that's insurance, remember. You made that on the board then, or maybe it was just before. We got money from the NFL to help replace the lights and I think some work on the stands, the football field. It was a hundred thousand, six figures. So there's money out there.
And by the way, that could be approached again. They, just because they gave it to us one time doesn't mean that they won't do it again.
There's, there you go. There you go. So there's some opportunities and that's great. Go forward.
Thank you, Doctor Cecini. Mrs. Hudson.
I don't have too much to say. I know that you guys have this unfinished business, but I did contact our PTA, our, the previous PTA that was the donation and stuff, and they said they would gladly accept anything that you would want to, if that's something that you decided they aren't offended or, and that was some of the concerns before, what if you-
That was a question I had asked.
Yeah, so-
You know, because a lot of times people want to donate.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that you wouldn't step on some of these toes.
And I asked that and I kind of made that, they should just more than start making sure that we got them. So she was very, she thought that was wonderful and either way, she's very grateful that they're accepting the gift. And I know Mr. Pfeifer, you know, Doctor Imperial asked me yesterday and I couldn't tell you guys exactly, but I asked them today about the wall and they're 75% done. So that was their answer and their response. I couldn't tell completely, but that's what they told me.
And we're talking about the retained-
The retained wall, yeah. It's coming, but they could, like, they're almost finished. They got the, like, the grate on it today. So it's looking good. Thank you.
Now, do any of the administrative, Laura, do you have anything to add to the report?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to turn now to our business manager, Mr. Christie. Do you have anything to report?
Just one item. You may recall last fall, the limits for bidding out supplies was increased from $10,000 to $18,500. However, the rub at that time was that it would not take place until January of 2019. Since that point, as part of the budget package that was approved at the state level on June 30th, those limits become effective immediately. So the old rule was between $4,000 and $10,000, you had to get quotations. Anything over $10,000 you had to bid out. The new rule is anything up to $10,000, you can buy from whoever you want. Between $10,000 and $18,500, you must get phone quotations. Anything over $18,500 must be bid out. So I just thought I'd mention that to the board because it is a significant thing for us because it gives us some leeway and flexibility if we have to buy things on a quick, quick basis. Thank you.
Thank you. To the boards. I'll turn now to committee reports and turn first to Director Wilson and Pathliner.
They are not meeting in July. Our next meeting is August.
Parkway West, for call.
Just saying, there was no meeting in July, so there's no people.
Shasta, Director Shreiber.
We meet September.
And Director Shell, PSBA and Legislature, do you have anything to report?
Just what Mr. Christie was talking about, the budget, I mean, approved, signed with law. Basic education funding is set at $5.4 billion and it does not include that student achievement education block grant. So things like transportation, social security, all those things are now separate. And the accountability block grant has been assured at, was it $100 million? Yes, $100 million for the accountability block grant. So things seem to be settled kind of how they've always been mostly. The budget also provides $15 million stimulus on exams and there is talk about different things for this coming school year and what that's going to look like. We're still sure but not sure. And there's a webinar coming up?
There's a webinar on July 23rd and another one again on the following Monday, July 30th, which will give us more information on the exams.
We're just not at $15 million to supplement those test notes are, that that's also in the budget. There's also a new system for teacher physical evaluation. And 50% of the overall rating is to be based on student performance for teachers and principals. And for non-teacher professional employees, it's 20% of the overall rating is to be based on student performance there and there. And then for the other 50% for the teachers and principals, it's broken down into building level data, teacher-specific data, and other things and that's coming in. The PlanCon moratorium, another was commissioned with PlanCon, that will not affect current projects. And so all projects currently in the PlanCon pipeline and any new Part A school construction or renovation project applications received before October 1st of this year will be eligible for state reimbursement and it won't be impacted by the moratorium. The caveat is, of course, this is all based upon availability of funds. And I mentioned the PlanCon process because if we, we as an entity, we do some renovating and building, and if we fall into that, we need to be aware that there's some money, but not guarantee. And it has to be in a certain part of the process by October 1st. There's some changes to your strategic plan. That's based on Chapter 4 changes that will not be finalized until the end of this year, but it removes the requirement for districts to complete state prescribed strategic planning every six years. So we still have other requirements from Chapter 4 that we have to follow. And so that's still in play and it's long and complicated. And if anybody has a question, look on the PDE website or call me. Now, school districts are allowed to, they just call out that school districts are allowed to reopen their 2012 and 2013 budgets to reflect final state authorization. So we may or may not need to call that anything. Let's see, we talked about that. The charter school reform, thoughts stalled out, so it's pretty much where we are all the charter school, sort of funding and kind of ability assessment. So that's basically the reporting. The legislature goes into recess in September, so there might not be too much going on in the-
To pick up on your comment about charter schools, since our last meeting, there was a report, and I apologize because I meant to find out what district it was, but I had heard where there was a district, and I thought it was in Pennsylvania, but it might have been Apple State, where the local board basically relinquished control to the state. They had been losing five, six million dollars a year. And the state has brought in a charter school to run the district. I don't know if anybody's heard this also and which district?
That's their one.
It's within, it's within PM, okay. So that, I bring that up because our frustration, our boards and the state generally, I think a big part of our frustration is that, as I see it, charter schools are often able to secure funding at our expense, but they're not always subject to the same accountability and criteria that we are.
But that seems to be a financial accountability, but since they are public schools, the academic accountability is still there, but in that way, a lot of personal matters fall short. But the financial accountability is completely different.
Well, and I bring that up because I don't know what's going to be happening going forward, but if it is a, and maybe a solicitor can fill in some things or at least opine, but if we're talking about an established school district within the state and assuming that they're going to continue to have to take PSSA exams and they're still going to be measured the way every other school district is, it will be interesting, I suspect, to see how a charter school is going to do once for the first time they're going to have to play by the same rules that the rest of us have to play by. I don't know if you've heard anything about this situation. Is there-
No, or really, that you've talked about, it's, you know, if you're right, it will be interesting. Now, they have to make adequate annual yearly progress and a lot of them have not done very well with everybody, some have. And as those standards keep going up, it'll be interesting to see how they can figure. You know, I frankly expect that some action out of Harrisburg on charter schools that Mrs. Shell pointed out, it just fizzles, same old thing.
They could have to agree, one part is do we do local authorization agreement, do we state authorization? That was one of the points that potential could have been set that they could agree on. So, and there are other things too. And so those, all of these, the talks are sort of- of, so beyond where you were.
Any other discussion on this? Before we move on to our attendants, I did want to mention one thing which I neglected to do during my portion of the reports, I was asked during the executive session to talk about an article, it was in the Post Gazette on Sunday, talked about, I think the headline was sixteen of forty-three districts had increases in property tax. There was a, in fact, a chart, I have it before me right now, showing the districts, showing what their increases are. You know, Carlington is right smack in the middle, our rate is where it had been in the past, in the higher range, we're pretty much right in the middle, the pack. It was also mentioned in that chart that, it was noted that Pittsburgh Public Schools has held taxes steady for eleven consecutive years. Duquesne also, interestingly enough, Duquesne just school district, their, their tax rate this coming year is the same as it was in two thousand one, two thousand two. Another school district actually has a slight decrease, but of the other forty districts, the school district with the smallest increase in the last eleven years has been Carlington. We've had but a five percent increase in our taxes. Wilkinsburg, I think, had something like a ten percent increase, and everybody else was in double digits. So, we've been doing, I think, a pretty good job over the last eleven years trying to hold the line on, on what we ask our community members to, to pay, and, you know, I applaud the support, the boards, the boards of the city for the last eleven years. I want to note also in the article, a couple of corrections, and we actually, Kim had had a chance to talk, just so the public's aware, we don't raise a million dollars per mil, it's something along the lines of, Kirby, five hundred and forty or sixty thousand?
For the twelve, thirteen school year, at face value, it's approximately five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars per mil.
And, and also while our budget may be showing the use of one point two, and not two million dollars in fund balance money, in fact, we have not used fund balance money in our actual spending for some time. We're very conservative, we've talked about this in previous meetings, we estimate low on revenues and high on expenditures in our actual numbers. We fully anticipate that we will be in a surplus situation this year, as we've been for a number of years, and that's why we have a, money in the bank that's going to allow us, in terms of fourteen Kirby million dollars.
The audited figure at June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven is roughly thirteen point eight million dollars. We're anticipating for the eleven, twelve school year, that it'll approximately go up by approximately five hundred thousand dollars.
And that's going to allow us to do the improvements of facilities, and we've been talking, but we touched on the tennis courts, you know, a lot of other things we talked about, a lot of work on the elementary schools, we're going to be able to do a lot of this work, and I think we're all crossing our fingers that we can do it without borrowing, because we've been proven, we've been saving, we've been preparing for this day. So, I did want to point that article out, I don't know if there's anything else anybody else wanted to add? If not, we will move on to business before the board just see under miscellaneous, there is a motion to approve field trip and conference, conference requests, and I will entertain a motion for those, those items as presented. So, here's the motions, there are second? Second. Moving second, is there any discussion?
I have, um...
Well, I just, I started, I started with the one, I'll just, I'll do better next time. Yes?
I just wanted some confirmation on, on item three.
No, no, I just, we're, we're right now at number one.
Oh.
On the first page, just the field conference.
Oh, not the whole list. Oh, okay, is that?
And I apologize, I know what you used to do.
When you said whole list, you meant whole thing.
I'm sorry, yes, the list for the conference. Is there any discussion on that? There being none, we will vote all those in favor to say aye. Opposed, nay. Abstentions, motion carries. Item number two and three, I'll entertain a motion to move the board meeting that currently is scheduled for August sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, to August twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, and this is to be advertised accordingly. And number three, a motion to, in this motion to approve the Fall, the Band, the Fall Band Festival to include a skydiver and fireworks with the provision of the filing of the proper insurance forms with the district. Is there a motion for those two items?
Some of...
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have some criticism for adding three. When you say the filing of proper insurance forms, what, what exactly does that mean when it comes to town? And is there a deadline that, that we want, need to set to say we can't have this information by this before the...
Well, with regard to proper insurance forms, I'll turn to our solicitor, we have to discuss.
I can answer that part of it. What we would need from them is a certificate of insurance on the skydiver, showing that in fact, the district has been named as an additional name insured on that particular policy, and we'd want to look at the amounts to make sure that we are covered under the Tort's Claim Act for both individual and aggregate exposure that may come about. We would look at that certificate and make sure that it, that those two things.
So, there's a standard limit in terms of money?
There's a recurrence in, in the aggregate, and we'd want to make sure that they were both covered.
And is there a deadline of, that we need all that information by before we...
From my standpoint, it would be before he jumped, and you may want to, you know...
Dr. Cecini, when, when is the, when is the festival, do you have an opening of September?
So, would we need, legally, we wouldn't need it, like, by September?
No, as long as they, they had it here on, you know, before he landed, we'd be fine. But I, you know, I would suggest that, you know, thirty day, or, you know, August thirty-first would make some, some sense, in case there is some problem.
And I, and I would, I would too, it's in the interest of the band and the boosters to get it to us as soon as possible, so that if there is an issue, we can resolve it, because clearly, if we don't have what we need, we're not going to...
Right, and I think, but again, if we can have something stated that we would like it by then, just to be clear, so, you know, should something come up, no one can say, oh, well, we didn't know, or we fraud, or, so we can just eliminate it.
And that's, I prefer, so I should tend, if you could perhaps, let, let folks know about this and...
I'll take care of tomorrow, and then contact band parents, and if we already have some documents, we'll just make sure, because we want to move ahead with this and not let it linger, so, we want to get clarification tonight, and then that gives us some direction and to contact and get everything in order, and I can begin that tomorrow.
Any further discussion on this item? Is there anything?
I'm, I'm still struggling with, with the, I have...
May I add something, please? I did check with our insurance company. They are fine with the fireworks, as long as certain items are adhered to, they are not fine with the skydiver. Will be no coverage via our insurance for the skydiver.
This is why we need assurances, and we have the insurance from the sources.
I was aware that, we were looking strictly at the, the skydiver, not so much that we insure him if he breaks an ankle, that's his problem. If he lands on five kids, that's what we want to be, yeah, be sure that we have coverage for that sort of thing.
Other discussion on these two items? There being none, we will vote all those in favor to say aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Turn to you, three now, or just three?
Just three.
Abstentions, motion carries. Turn now to items four and five, and that's approval of both the, of the handbooks for Carlington Junior Senior High School, that's item four, and then for Carnegie and Crafton Elementary Schools, there are handbooks. Is there a motion to approve these, these two items? So, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, is there any discussion? I, I would, there have been some comments made by directors about some, having proved and edited, and made some suggested changes. When do we, what's the deadline for, how quickly do you, do you need this approved today?
No, I mean, as far as the high school goes, we do like to pass out the first day or days of school. If we, if we got approval with the August meeting, the first August meeting, we think we have the chance to...
Well, and I don't mean to delay things, because I think a lot of this stuff can be just maybe handled pretty easily, just, I know some directors have talked to Mr. Pfeffer already. Perhaps we just move forward with approval of these with the understanding that any, any comments, any editorial comments or editor, editing, approving, would be included in, in the handbooks as we go forward, there's some dates.
There's an inter motion to say subject editorial changes. But with a deadline, so that there's sufficient time so that...
And that's why I had to...
As manuals can be printed.
My understanding is that they have to send it to the publisher of the elementary, so. I wish J.C.'s on here, because she would definitely know it better than me, but my understanding from my secretary was, was there was kind of a push for it, just because they edit, bind, and seal, and, like, you guys have a hard laminate, like, or just, like, laminated the covers and stuff, so I know that they were looking to get that done soon. Does that make sense?
Yes, can you give us...
I had no idea when, all I know is that I had to go, that was my, that I sent our part, because we did change the, want to accept the, the use policy with the self, with something that we needed to update with the board policy, and I sent it to J.C., and then I made it right here, here with you, so.
Would it be reasonable just to go ahead and prove these motions with the understanding that directors should in the next, by the end of next week?
That'd be great.
They've got any comments whatsoever, provide them to Mr. Pfeffer, and that we could expect to see them incorporate, obviously, if there's something, if there's substantive difference, you know, we can deal with it at that point, but we don't want to hold you guys up yet, we want to, like I said, I saw some things, dates were wrong, I mean, it's, it's relatively minor stuff, but we'd like it to be...
Aggressive.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Have Mr. Pfeffer had a chance to review the three of these?
I, I've had a chance to review the, the high school, I got copies of the elementary schools early this afternoon, and we'll be taking a look at those as well, but I did review the high school and, and also bought some of the dates, just some minor things that we need to correct, and they're easily corrected.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that before we approved it, that was final, that you had that opportunity too.
Right, thank you.
I will, before we go to vote, also point out, I know I've, Aaron and I've had a chance to talk about the handbooks as well as other items that, recurring items, that perhaps we can get together, I know you're working on getting a schedule or a calendar together as to regular deadlines for items.
Yes, Michelle Herman went through the last couple of years of the board agendas and look at when things come up on a regular basis, and to see that we can develop a working calendar where we'll schedule work to be done, and look at timelines, and perhaps some of the things we could get into the can sooner, and certainly the approval of handbooks would be one of those, because it comes up every year. And ideally, we should be able to get this and scheduling and some of those, my goal would be to have some of these things approved in the springtime, April and May, so, but that, but that's...
And I think we're, I think certainly the board would, would like to have more time, and we got this in our packets on.
Tonight. Tonight.
At the other meeting, you had that guy.
Yeah, the other meeting.
The high school we had.
Oh, we got the last, in the last week, so, and we understand, there's a lot going on, but if you can be a little more organized, give us a little more time, we appreciate that, so. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote on the items number four and five. Yes, what is it? We can't, or we can just expect that if our changes will be included, then we're going to be coming to the end of next week, but if you feel that...
No, I'm asking. I think, I think that the direction is, is clear, I don't know that you have to...
With that said, we will vote all those in favor to say aye. Opposed, nay? Abstentions, motion carries. Under financials, see three items. Number one, to prove the June two thousand twelve athletic fund report as submitted with a balance of five thousand nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Number two, the June two thousand twelve activities under court for the balance of thirty thousand one hundred and six dollars, eleven cents. And the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen agreement with In Community Magazine for four quarter issues, in the In Carlington Montour magazines as presented, zero motion for those three others.
So, moved.
And has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, is there any discussion? Director Shell?
Again, I always am, they were about discussing contracts, I'm sure it's a little bit okay, but there is that, that issue with the contract, like, eight pages versus four pages in language in that contract. If it, if it's not pertinent or relevant in future, could it be amended or removed? Because I think it's probably a solution, whether it does it need to be, as you would be saying. We either have the pages that we need, or there is a limit. The, the language of the contract seems to imply that there is a limit, and that there are bundles that we need purchased, but then there was some discussion about, there are no bundles, and you just pay what you need, and so if there's, if there's a contract, a promise of conduct, I think we, we need to be clear on that, and then that would help set aside any confusion people might have about the rates, because it's always, the rate is the same, I mean, they, they call out the rate for individual pages, and if we do the simple math, it's eight or four, it's sort of like, you get one for a quarter and four for a dollar. There's, there's, I mean, it's just, so if there, if no bundle exists, then let us get the bundle language out of the contract, but if bundles do exist, then let us agree that, the, the, this is what we're going to do.
Is there, is there an urgency with this, is there a deadline? Mr. Pfeffer, Mrs. Herman, do we need this approved tonight, or should we go back?
Well, this, this agreement, I mean, if you read the terms, it says the agreement's from July fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, so it's already passed due...
Well, I was...
Which is not in the future.
I don't know when the first publication is printed, that would be the question.
Right, I see a, a September date as for the issue, as the first, the first issue, and that's why I was asking, what's the, if there's a deadline? Do you not, and offhand, have...
I actually just submitted for the, for everything for this next issue, which should come out in August, that was under the former contract. So, we set it up with the eight versus four based on graduation, it's an eight page around the holidays, the December issue comes out, and it's generally eight pages, and then the interim newsletters are less, but we've always purchased more, just because we didn't want to overstep what we thought we may have to fill at that time. So, we set up originally that way, and they just renewed it exactly as it was originally set up.
Michelle, this isn't the newsletter that is mailed to everyone's home.
Yes.
This is it.
The magazine, a full color magazine.
This is the magazine in community, just in Carlington, it's not the green and white newsletter.
Well, who's responsible for the green and white newsletter?
We excluded that one, we went into this contract, yes. It was actually more cost effective to go only with In Community, because it's full color, and we're getting it four times a year versus the former newsletter only went out twice a year.
And I think, you know, the, I don't have a problem with the fees at all, and, and my understanding, whenever the contract, is that we have to agree for eight pages, eight pages costs this much, and then they gave you a four page option for whatever reason in the contract, and then there's an option to buy additional pages, and all the rates come together, there's a, a hundred dollars present for aid, and that's a great, but then there was discussion about how there really wasn't bundle options, and so, and I'm like, well, are we agreeing to do eight pages, or are we agreeing to sometimes do four pages, six pages, two pages? What is it, what is our responsibility, what is, what is actually in front to protect ourselves, what are we committing to? And just to be clear, that we, we understand it's a certain commitment, and we will fill eight pages, we sign up for eight pages, or, you know, it's okay if we want to do two pages, but the way the contract is currently written, it seems four or eight pages, maybe additional pages if we want to, two pages never an option. But if there's no bundle, and you can do as many pages as you want, then two pages becomes an option, and what if really it's eight pages and we only do two pages, and then we are, we promised to commit to eight pages, you know what I'm saying, because they need to figure out how to lay out the magazine.
So, my interpretation then is that there is no minimum pages, and it's X of number of dollars per page with a minimum requirement of sixteen pages in a year? So, is that, is that a way to...
Originally, when they came to us, it was a minimum of eight pages, and at the time, Dr. Panza negotiated the four interim pages, because we weren't sure we would have enough material to fill eight pages per deadline.
Per quarter.
Per quarter.
So, sixteen pages per year.
Correct, but with all the other In Community magazines, supposedly that is the contract, eight pages per deadline, but we're a smaller district, so they agreed to reduce it to four, four to two of those four times.
So, basically what you're saying, if I could just summarize, I said, twice a year, we're going to pay twenty-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
The other two times a year, we're going to pay twelve fifty, because we're not going to be able to fill the total of eight pages. So, basically, what you're spending is roughly seven hundred dollars for this program based on past history.
And she's looking to clear up the language, so, I'm just looking for...
I don't think it's worded real well, but the more I read it, and based on what Michelle's telling us, the more it makes sense.
Right, but I think, and then we say, you know, an inch...
It's just not worded, probably.
But then there's discussion how there really isn't a bundle, what it's only, is there...
But let me, let me, if I could clarify a little bit, because I was on the phone with the folks in community who are very flexible and willing to work with us...
The engineers that we had here or someone else that there are fans, compressor fans or something in the rooms.
That's the air handlers that are not being used in many of the rooms. And that was one of the things that may be a potential source of power being that they're not being used. And it all depends on the capacity of the circuits because whenever I spoke to Bill, he needed two hundred thirty volts, thirty amps. So Johnny would have to see if that power were available for the the air movers that are not being used. So I don't know if that potential's been explored, but you may want to ask him that.
Right.
So we're looking at, I might have got the terminology wrong, upgrading the service panels, is that?
That would be part of the bigger scope of work.
So is that something that we should?
That's something that with a major renovation, that's something you'd be looking at at that point.
Because that would have to be like with a major renovation.
Well, yes, for the whole building, that would need to be. If you were looking at temporary service, you could always acquire temporary service, you need additional metering. Duquesne might put a meter in for you for the service, but the the issue would be, you know, the distribution within the facility in a manner that's safe for the students, the teachers and everybody else. I mean, you just don't want to have wires running along the floor. I think your option would be if the air handlers have the same type of power capacity, that may be an option that we could pursue. But if not, then it's it's something that you have to look with a larger renovation.
And when we had the gentleman in command talk about some of the options for cooling, option five, I think it was, did consider extensive renovations. And I believe contemplated this kind of-
Mechanical, electrical, as well as the plumbing?
And so the needs that we would have electric-
Would be would be addressed in that scenario.
In option five, right.
To clarify my position, you talked about the heating and cooling problem to the building in the spring, so February, March, April. We did not have a good solution, I would say, for the spring. So we did experience some days where the temperatures were in the eighties inside the building most of the day. So as my personal opinion, my personal opinion would be that we should aim to have some kind of solution in place for the fall. If this summer is any indication, we probably expect high temperatures in those two buildings again. If an initial roadblock is met with a potential electrical problem, that's a good thing to be aware of. I think Ray's suggestion to explore alternative powering solutions is a great idea and the air handler solution is one. If that-
And the reason that I brought that up is because as the as the gentleman from Tower had explained, many of those air movers are no longer being used. And I don't know, Farley, I mean, are you aware of this in some of the, no? I know in Crafton that was the case because that was the building that you were, that was being discussed at present.
I know names on there, they're always running, but that's pretty sure that's not-
It's the units that sit under the windows.
Yeah, no.
Ray, did we have an energy audit at the high school through Simmons?
What? You'd have to ask John that. That rings a bell. I believe that he did.
And I think there will go to the elementary, but I think you could also just, and right now you wouldn't get a true reading of what kind of electrical use. But I would wonder if Duquesne might, where would we get our power from to provide us with a typical debt? Someone should be able to look at the service panel that we have.
You need to, all you need to do is call the account manager and he can give you daily updates for that. Whoever our account manager is.
But we need to see what the typical usage is when the school's in session. We're going to work out this summer to figure out what we have there and what we use.
Well, I think what it is, I think it's bigger than the general overall. I think what you're looking at are individual circuits that could feed these air conditioning units. And that's why, you know, I had suggested the the air handlers which were not being used, you do have overhead fans, but the air handling units have been turned off because of issues with them in several classrooms. I don't know the to the extent, but it would be that circuit would be available for this portable spot cooler, so to speak. The overall, you may not have a circuit that can handle that two thirty volts at thirty amps. That's the issue, not the overall power capacity, you know, that we're actually using on a daily basis.
So-
We need a single circuit for each one of those.
And that would be something easily looked at by John?
He would know. He would know if that potential exists.
So we can get that information.
So just to finish, my thought would be, or my hope would be that if this roadblock turns out to be a true roadblock, then maybe that, for whatever reason, that circuit's not available. And if we say that powering these spot coolers is not an option, that we would then look to plan B. And there would be some creative set of solutions that we come up with that says we have to find a way to impact the temperature in those rooms in some way, some reasonably cost-effective way. So that might mean a number of things. I don't know what it is, but to to hit this roadblock and then just stop and say, oh yeah, that's too bad. I feel like that would not be sufficient, given the amount of time that we have between our start school and given the heat that we're experiencing this summer. So just my wish, my hope for us would be that we continue to explore. If we need help outside of John, we could get professional help from industry.
Tower would experience. Tower, Tower would sub resource.
That would be my hope.
And we have, clearly, we are committed to investing in our buildings. And we are going to do something. We, one of the things I wanted to get into new business, but I'll just sort of tap into now while we do with this, is we need, I think we need to start with with developing a plan. We sit, we get together, we talk about it and we wait until next week and then we start again. I don't know if we want to put together an ad hoc committee or put together some kind of timeline, but I think we need to really start formally with this process, which I believe everybody here endorses. With that said, any solution to deal with what I would suggest is a short-term issue. Because if we're talking about, again, we've talked about the presentation we saw in option five involving not just the air conditioning, but the heating and plumbing and the electrical work, all that, that would have to take place probably over the course of a year. Ray, is that what you took away from that? I mean, it would take a while to do that kind of work.
Well, I mean, to do the actual work, he said it couldn't be done in one single summer.
Right.
So it would take more than one summer period.
So best-case scenario, it seems to me, if we were going to do this, it would mean closing, it would mean throughout the school year in each building, one year at it, one year after the other, I don't see doing it the same year. And that would mean this summer, this year we need to get by. Next year, best-case scenario, we're doing this work on one of the dorms. The following year, we're doing work on another. So for one of the schools, we're looking at a year, another one of the, the other school, we're looking at two years. That's, and I lay that out to say that's that's our short-term goal. So whatever we're going to do, I'd just like to see that the investment in it is appropriate considering the amount of time that we need it to last.
And the reason why this was brought up is because these spot coolers were very cost-effective from the standpoint of what we were presented with. We were looking about a thousand dollars for a thirty-day period, which would cover most of the intensity within the school. Nice thing about these is you can run them overnight on a high setting. And then you can turn them back because they are noisy and would interfere with the classroom situation. They, this has been done in other schools. Bill had done them in another school, which is one of the reasons why I suggested at least taking a look at it. But you can turn them down to a level where you're just providing comfort, you know, after cooling the building overnight. Because I know years ago, we used to have other custodians, maintenance people, somebody used to go open windows so that at least it would be able to cool over overnight. You know, so when the kids came in, it still wasn't nine degrees in these classrooms.
And to your point, I think my ideas of a plan B would be in the realm of opening windows and exploring other very cost-effective. But even if we impact the temperature by five degrees, I think that would be a clear something that's been done. I just don't want it to stop because of the-
Any further comments on this topic?
I have another topic.
Okay, are you done?
I'm not done. I would, I need-
Let's take a break from Jim.
Under compromise, iPad donation returned two thousand dollars. Maybe Bob could give me an answer on this number. How many iPods and how much did they cost that are now being used at Crafton Elementary?
Give you approximate, it was approximately, I want to say-
Twenty-five, right?
Yeah, they, no, they have thirty iPods at Crafton that are in the iPod lab. And it was about, I want to say roughly twelve thousand dollars for the cart and the iPods.
Twelve thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And are they being used at Carnegie also?
They were this past year, that's-
So they were being shared between the two schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And now, since the iPads will be in Carnegie, the iPods will be left at Crafton.
That being said, I feel as a school district that we should make a contribution a whole lot more than the two thousand dollars. I think we should put a bill for that.
You're proposing that we we cover the entire cost of buying iPads for Carnegie Elementary?
For the equity, you know, the equity issue.
Now, what equity issues?
Well, the twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the cart and the iPods.
That was spent for most schools. That was spent, not just for years ago.
And their old iPods and Carnegie's getting new iPads. I think that in terms of equity, we should be able to score, but rather they now have comparable opportunity. I mean, sure, their old iPads at Crafton, but their still, iPods at Crafton, sorry. But they're still usable and they're still relevant. And so in terms of equity, we offer equity of, there's now, I guess, equity of opportunity that there wasn't before because now they don't have to share. But in terms of technological equipment, I think we're talking equity, I think they're absolutely. And Crafton PTA wanted to put in the fundraising that Carnegie put in and wanted to come to an agreement in the same light. I don't think anybody would turn that away. But I I cling whenever we talk about equity as if somehow there is a favorite school in this district. And that's that's not the case. It's a matter of circumstance and this happened and we bought the iPods and this was both. Because that was what was decided by the board and on the school that they could afford. The finances being essentially what they are now, so.
What, the thirteen million and the two million?
When, when, it was what, eleven million, twelve million? It wasn't, I mean, really, it wasn't that big a difference.
Rita, that might be something nice to shoot for. It might be nice, as you say, that the iPods are old and they're probably getting a lot of use and they're probably, you know, having marks on them and maybe need to be refurbished. This year, we're going to pay for the iPads at Carnegie. And perhaps next year, we could then budget iPads for Crafton. So that would be a level of equity.
And all this would have to be done with what the principals would like to do. And I, I'm a big fan of what the Carnegie PTA had done. Because there's ownership, there's a sense of camaraderie, a sense of teamwork with the district. And not everything has to be handed down to folks from on high, but rather they have some input. They have the power to effect change. I think what they did and the donation that they made, I think is very powerful. And I think, you know, and maybe I'm looking at it in a weird way or I'm not sure. But what they have done was amazing to me. And I think it really helped foster this sense of partnership and ownership to have these iPads that they know they worked hard for. There's the, they're inscribed with, you know, from the PTA. That's meaningful to those kids, that's meaningful to the school, it's meaningful to the parents. I don't, with all the other things that this board has to do for this, and in terms of approving expenditures for maintaining this district, years ago, when, you know, two years ago, when we're getting now, when we had this discussion before about purchasing iPads and for the schools, it was all about, you know, we can't afford that, and technology changes and we can't do that. Our financial situation is pretty much the same. We're actually down a mill now. So we could have the argument that we're now down five hundred thousand dollars when we weren't down before when we had this discussion two years ago when it was mixed. What this PTA has done is amazing, it is good. And, you know, to reach a compromise, I think is fine. But to make, to make it, we have to pay everything and then pay everything again for Crafton. That is not equity, that is scorekeeping. I don't think it fosters good public relations. I think it fosters this sort of keeping animosity that kind of gnaws away at us all the time. If the, and like I said, if the Crafton PTA wanted to and they very well could have a fundraiser and have reached a similar agreement. I think a partnership with parent organizations is a good thing. I don't think it makes us the greedy overlords that are taking money from us so they can get their goods. No, it's a partnership. They have ownership and the kids know that and siblings of those kids know that. And I just, I think I see kind of where you're coming from. But at the same time, this overriding sense in me is that if the parents have done this and I know they say they're not insulted, that, you know, compromise is a compromise, it's a given and taken. I think that's also their original intention, what they have done on their own. I think we should honor that. I think that that shouldn't be somehow erased in all of this. And that's my answer.
Thank you quickly, I did my clarification before my understanding of the chronology of what happened is that the district identified a need for iPods in classrooms. The district budgeted and paid for X number of units in the past at some point. And the two elementary schools shared those devices. I believe I heard previously that at the beginning of the last school year, last September, it just so happened that there were more teachers in Crafton that had requested the use of them than Carnegie. And then throughout the year, as they were being used and as the Carnegie teachers used them and saw like kids' response and how well they responded to them, they said, oh, this is really great, I'm going to sign up for more and request more. And I think what I heard previously is that when those requests bubbled up, they said, well, we do need to get some more. They put some requests in. And it was at that point somewhere that the PTA said, hey, we'd like to jump in and help make that happen. And their original idea was to buy iPods for Carnegie so we didn't have to share and so we could have more usage, which was a wonderful idea. And then toward the end, they said, well, should we do iPads or iPods? But the idea was that we as a district had these devices, they were shared between the two schools. There was no favoritism and I think the idea of the store movement at Crafton occurred at the beginning of the year because that was where more of the teachers were asking to use. So definitely not a preferential thing. It's a shared resource. Now the wants to have the Carnegie PTA make this gift compromise, hopefully makes everybody happy. But I agree with Director Shanks.
I agree. Also, I think of the gifts that we receive by the senior class, by the sixth grade classes. That's something that we always just embrace and appreciate and they always add things that add to our building. I, it also seems to me similar to the hard work that our boosters do to provide things that a lot, benefit our students and go forward. So I would prefer that we go forward as we have in that we let the principals and the technology department come up with some more goals about where we should invest money going forward. Because I don't see technology as a finished item. If it's anything like in our personal lives, it's it's an ongoing thing and there are continually new things we need to upgrade. So I would rather us look towards what goals we need and where our holes are across the district if we have extra money in technology to put it towards that.
Can I just clarify one thing? They were originally purchased for the high school. They were used one year-
Oh, would you say, would you say they?
The iPods.
The iPods.
The original iPods were purchased for use at the high school level.
When was it, Bob?
Pardon me?
When was that?
I don't know the year. It was probably, it wasn't last, it was two years ago. They were used one year at the high school and then when Ryan Girard, the technology coach, was going more to the elementarys, he said, they have an interest in using them, can we move them to the elementary schools and try it down there? Since everyone at the high school had laptops and interactive whiteboards. So that's when they were moved last year. So it was kind, they were used here one year. So they were originally purchased for the district use at the high, junior, senior level. So then they went to the elementary.
Well, you know, in terms of the gift from the PTA, I have a relationship with the president of the PTA, Crafton. I know that they also do a lot of fundraising. And it sort of goes along with what Sharon and I were saying. The choices that, I really respect the choices that Carnegie made. They want to do something with the kids there at that school and they originally decided they wanted to get iPods. As I recall the discussion we, of Kenny and made it possible for them to get iPads.
And then they, then they said, would I actually like to kick in more?
Exactly, yes. And the Crafton PTA, you know, they, they choose to do other things. That's their broader, they, in that community are, you know, active with that school. So, you know, I think that I really respect the choice that Carnegie PTA made. And I also expect the choices that Crafton PTA makes to make that school a positive learning experience there. So, you know, that's, that's sort of gets back to what I was saying last minute about, kind of hinted, like, say to people, well, you know, thanks, but we don't need you to give. Seems to me they gave a choice and I would respect the choice.
Okay, discussion. Anything else under unfinished business?
Two things. One, if this is considered or more present, could just do a brief update of the roster of our situation.
We last filed a document, I'm sorry, just- Well, I mean, credit for I, June fourth.
June fourth is the date.
Of our, our last filing. Nothing has been that we know has been filed today.
Nothing has been served on us, which would tell us that all of the documents are now before the Secretary of Education. The Secretary of Education has not made any ruling or indication of a ruling at this point. And he is under a timeline of which to do so. So we are awaiting a decision from the Secretary of Ed. And of course, that will group forward from that point, depending upon whether that decision turns out to be.
I will, I will note with regard to Riddlesville, which is often mentioned as by, about a similar situation in terms of a committee seeking to transfer. I believe the last ruling they received came about six months after the last of the permission had been presented to the deciding body. I don't know that it's going to be six months from now.
Russ doesn't remember, that ended up being a fairly much agreed-upon rule by the consensus. I mean, obviously, the secretary and the departments have had a number of things under the plate, but with the budget and the, what they've done with the distressed districts and things of that nature. So I don't know that this is a top priority for the department. I don't know that it isn't. All I know is that they will rule when and if they, when, not if, when they rule. And there's nothing we can do to speed it up or slow it down for them.
Any further questions for us, Felicity? Anything else under unfinished business?
It turns out I have like a half thing. Because I missed the last meeting, I just want to wrap up the iPad thing issue. We are returning two thousand dollars.
We have not voted on that.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted to ask that. And then just an update on, the board is still working on the facilities use policy and changes to the facilities use policy. There is nothing to present at this point. Some of the thinking that I'm doing is just trying to reconcile some goals and philosophy behind the policy. And for me, you know, my method is going to be more of a community outreach tool than money-making venture. But I understand that the reality is it has to be a sort of money-making element to it. In order to recoup maintenance costs and things like that, it's sort of profit-making. But rather, we do have to, we save some money for basic maintenance now, to save that. So trying to find that balance, maybe by next meeting, there will be something.
I think we should try to have something to discuss by the next meeting.
You made a commitment at the last meeting, I recall with them, Kathy Lopez-
Yes, I did.
Kathy Lopez mentioned needing, requesting a change or having spoken. Was it at the August?
That's what I thought we would have something by the August.
Yeah, I mean, I understand-
So they could plan to learn here.
And I, and I will keep that in mind. Have something to discuss, have something, and I'd look for input from all.
Nyra and I talked about it and-
Perhaps others would like to pick later.
We've never, we've passed through guys, we've never revisited it as far as getting feedback from the groups that it's affected, which just right off my note, the swimming and the soccer. And especially with swimming, which is year-round. It seemed like Ms. Lopez indicated that the additional fifty dollars for this impacted their team and the number of people. Swimming team, you need a lot of bodies.
Your turn.
Out of district. Out of district, which I am in favor of them paying something more than the district resident. But, so we also need to ask, what do you should consider reasonable?
And also the eighty percent requirement. Is that something that we, is that natural? Is that something that needs to be taken with realities of the demographics of people coming in to participate in these sports? Is that a real mistake?
Well, and as I recall, the facilities use policy does not prohibit any group from using our facilities. Rather, it is a structure that determines what they'll be charged based on the percentage of resident or non-resident individuals. And that's, so it's-
And in practice, what they really do is a pretty bit of, in spirit, perhaps that was the intention, but in fact, well, it's a new.
Part of what I, I think I was sitting here reflecting on what Betty just said about how it's impacted them. And I do think that's an important thing to get from all the groups that may feel. But my own awareness of the impact, not just on the sports, but on the services to the community such as, whether it's the swim lessons, water aerobics, which are, which senior citizens could take up. And I don't know about the other sports having things that adults and seniors could take. But that, I think, was a loss to have some of those things away. Maybe getting some records. We talked about, I believe, Michelle Weaver is the contact person for all the requests. And have her give us a summary of this past year of who made requests. And perhaps even those people that made requests but then decided it was too expensive. So we can see what we're, who we're losing and also what kind of money we brought in.
Or maybe we did.
Both of you should.
I think there was one, something still talking about bringing in a language program.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the philosophy is it, it's going to benefit our children to have this program. Those folks may make money, but yet it would mean that they're having it in the school. You know, where's the compromise?
Yes.
What about drivers then? Did we lose that?
No.
So that's different.
Could I add a comment that I'd like to see us look to a lens of, is the program, an outdoor field that's being used that doesn't require electricity or janitor's time or fence up our building versus something that's using three classrooms in one wing at ten o'clock at night versus three o'clock in the afternoon? I think there's a difference between what group it is, what time of day it is, what impact on our facility and our staff.
And I will point out that in the facilities use policy, there is a fee schedule and it does consider X amount for the, X amount for a classroom.
And the eighty-five percent cutoff, which is picking cutoff, and the fifty dollar per non-district participant fee applies only to athletic group. So.
We also, continuing to think, wow, the, another issue that we've run into that, as I understand it, is with the use of our boosters, being able to use it to fundraise. And at least myself, I don't feel good at all about taking money from our boosters while they're busy earning money to pay for things to benefit our students. And so I would suggest that you look at that piece. I don't know if that's differentiated, I don't remember that, but I know that that's been an issue. We've had one booster group that had a- that, but I know that that's been an issue, we've had one booster group that had to pay us five hundred dollars, which I feel unconscionable about. I also remember reading sometime over this winter in the paper about one of our booster groups that was offering their event at a school other than ours, and I don't, I never talked to them, so I don't know if it was because of the reason of money, but I would think that, I feel like those, they should be embraced and encouraged to be able to use our facilities.
Something close to that, we are no longer with the Coca-Cola contract.
We are no longer.
With the Coca-Cola contract, but the facilities use policy says that because we are with Coca-Cola contract, we have to, anybody who uses our facilities has to-
Use Coke.
Sell Coca-Cola products, even something like that, really should have been knocked out, when Coca-Cola contract ended.
And, and we'll need to see that whatever's before this body by the next meeting, discuss those changes, should be, should be clear.
So they may have any other recent ideas you consider?
Any other comments on facilities policy? Anything else then under new business?
Sure.
Uh, one follow-up comment.
We got nothing else to do, John.
I, yeah, true. Follow-up comment on the tennis court, off, that's a great idea, I like also your follow-up idea about looking at it in broad context. I do remember somebody mentioning last year that there is someone on our staff that is great at grant writing and finding grants, and maybe we can tap into them in advance of some of our broader-
We got a team that just brought in three hundred grants.
Right.
So, those resources, I don't remember the person's name, but there's one person that's done grant writing a lot in addition to this team, so.
Between, I don't recall.
I, it might be someone-
And Lisa.
Lisa Ralph.
So, maybe we can tap into that resource-
Absolutely.
-as a part of that broad. And I will, and I would echo your comments about, we need to make a more structured effort around the broader renovations, the facility plan, the broader big picture of planning about tennis courts in advance, it's a lot to bite off in June, but maybe we start formalizing that, and I don't know what that looks like, maybe we should carve out some time.
I think additionally, for the planning of the facilities, we're forming a committee as we bring it up, and have that committee-
So we go forward, try to get that together soon.
Well, that'd be something we bring to the next meeting as a recommendation.
I think that's a great idea. Just put us with some, well, maybe we should all just put some thought into it, because the idea that at the next meeting, we're gonna establish at least the vehicle through which this board is gonna go forward with accomplishing this goal of investing more facilities. Anything else under new business? Open it up now, open forum, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to address, or Mr. Kavistic, Mayor Carnegie, can you come up, please, sir?
No.
Good to see you, always a pleasure to see you.
Always a pleasure, and it's even a bigger pleasure today.
Before you speak, I'd just like to, me take a little thunder out of, a little wind out of your sails, but I, on behalf of this board and the district, wanna thank you, the council of Carnegie, for a recent-
And everybody on council was, was, everybody on council was on board with that, so it's-
Can you, can you just elaborate a bit for us?
We made a resolution on council to, that, you know, we're not, we don't believe in the succession, we, you know, we want the district to stay together, we realize there'll be a tremendous impact on all three communities if there is a succession, so the resolution's on file, and our council president, Rick Delos, you know, led the charge on that, so we, we really, we really feel strongly about that, and you know how, personally, how I feel about the school district.
And I had an opportunity in April, first meeting, your council president, he brought this up at that point in time, we were very excited to see what he actually did, so, again, I-
Not, not a problem, it's, it's, I think our council would say it's, it's our pleasure, we, we believe in the district, so. And speaking of my pleasure, this Twenty-First Century Grant is just a, to me, it's very exciting, it fills a need for that sixth, seventh, and eighth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade gap that we have, you know, the programming gap there, the activity gap, the performance gap, and I think this grant will do a lot to service that, and I really wanna thank all the teachers involved, but I'm here primarily for one reason, because I knew the person who, who really led the charge in this, would understate her role. I, I have to thank, a tremendous thank you to Mrs. Myford, because she worked extremely hard on this, but she worked on it on two occasions, the first occasion, the unsuccessful grant, which actually led to the grant, she put in a tremendous amount of time, which, which at least laid the foundation and the framework for the successful grant, and so I, I can't thank Mrs. Myford enough, and the team that was involved, but I'm telling you right now, I know firsthand how much work that she put in on this, and it was a tremendous amount of work on her end, so she's to be really applauded for this, so thank you very much. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our strong organizations in the borough, the library, Aaron Tipping, worked very hard on both occasions to, to make this grant work, because there is a community aspect to it, the Boys and Girls Club tried very hard to fit it into their schedule, it just didn't fit in. And the last thing I wanna say, what are probably the most exciting part of the grant that I see, is the component of the mentoring, and I think that that's gonna have, especially with our at-risk, at-risk students, I think that's gonna have a, a strong effect on their performance at this school for all six years, so I think this grant is gonna pay off dividends well, you know, it's well worth the effort that Mrs. Myford put into it, so thank you guys, thank all the teachers, and thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I just wanna add, you know, should this be successful, I mean, this grant is only for three years, and, well, you know, my hope is, and my feeling is, if it will be successful, given that it will be on this board to provide the resources in large part to continue, a lot of those activities will have also those activities beyond the three years, so as great as this is, this is an opportunity for some change in how we do things that ultimately could be in whatever board's hands from that time frame, to continue, because I think that the, the, the administration is absolutely correct, and, and this is why Mrs. Myford and the team worked so hard, at three o'clock in the morning, working hard to do this. When we see the benefit, I think that's something that we will not be able to turn away from as we move forward, keep that in mind, I think it's a commitment, not only to our students but to the community that we are abarking on, and it's a huge, you know, it's a moving process.
It is, thanks again. Any other thing under open forum, either from the audience or from the board? Yeah, sure.
Just a, announcing an event or a, a group that pulls together the communities, the soccer program, the youth soccer program is doing signups, I believe, this coming week and the following week for kindergarten through sixth grade, so there's more information on the Carlington Soccer website, it was not the district's website, but go to Google, like, the Carlington Soccer, great information on the signups, great program, gets kids from all three districts playing together, and it's a powerful team effort, so.
Is it pending, pals? If there's something else, we'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna adjourn.
It's been moved, we adjourned, it's our second.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Meeting is adjourned.